I'd like to welcome you to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021, being held in the Microsoft Teams platform via video conference. Please note that this meeting will be recorded and feature public comment. Commissioners are asked to mute their microphones for not speaking and to verbally identify yourself prior to making any comments. We do have a new commissioner. I don't see that she's on yet, but Commissioner Barnes has been appointed to the Planning Commission and hopefully will join us shortly. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, this is Regina Jackson, Planning and Zoning Coordinator. I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present and can hear me by calling the roll. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Present.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Present.
Commissioner G?
Present.
Commissioner Coleman?
Present.
Commissioner Page?
Present.
Commissioner Barnes? Six members of the Planning Commission are present. This public work session of Planning Commission is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Northam's March 12th, 2020 Executive Order, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of COVID-19. A quorum of the commission is not physically present in the meeting location, but members have joined remotely. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you will find posted on the city's planning department webpage, with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will be recorded and feature public comment. Even if the members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, Planning Commission is convening by video conference via Microsoft Teams app, as posted on the city's website, identifying how the public may join. I will now turn our proceedings over to our Planning Director, Mr. Baldwin.
Mr. Baldwin is having communication issues. So we'll go ahead and start. We're going to start off, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, with Stacy Porter giving a presentation on the Planning Commission's annual report from last year. Stacy, if you want to come forward and start your presentation?
I sure will. Thank you so much. And good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. This is Stacy Porter, one of the senior planners here in the Planning Department. And I'd like to provide a brief overview of your annual report that describes your activities for the 2020 calendar year. And each of you should have received a copy of the report in your agenda packets, if you got the paper packet, or electronically. The Virginia Administrative Code dictates that your annual report is to be provided to the local governing body for their review. Your report began with an introductory greeting addressed to the members of City Council, which is your governing body, from your Chairman, Dr. Albert Williams. Next, we provided a listing of the 2020 membership roster. You maintain a full commission of seven members for most of the calendar year. It was noted that your City Council liaisons during 2020 were Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke and Councilman Shannon Glover. We then described the purpose of the commission, which largely includes providing recommendations to City Council on land use matters. And your other duties that are also in partnership with planning staff include the preparation and maintenance of our comprehensive plan and the development and implementation of our zoning ordinance. Sorry, despite the public health challenges during 2020, your year was quite productive. During nine months of public meetings, you were able to hear 23 public hearing items, two of which required your final determination. You made 21 recommendations on the remaining items, of which were forwarded to City Council for final action. This report highlights your review and recommendations for seven of the 23 major public hearing items, which include two apartment complexes, a rezoning of the North Pier site, a rezoning and three use permits to facilitate the development of the former Jeffrey Wilson Housing Development property, which is known as Seaboard Commons, the creation of a district that paves the way for Portsmouth's first casino gaming establishment, the creation of a new development overlay district to revitalize the former Uptown area of the city, and oversight of a complete rewrite of the zoning ordinance as directed by City Council in 2017. And finally, we highlighted your work with staff on the bike and pedestrian plan. The presentation of the plan was provided by staff at your July work session and highlighted the plan's major goal to create a complete network of high-quality bikeways, sidewalks, and trails to allow citizens to have a clear path to walk and bike from home to their chosen destination. And that does conclude my overview of your annual report. And we, as staff, we respectfully submit this report for your review. And we welcome any amendments or additions.
Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Porter?
Mr. Chairman, this is, Mr. Chairman, this is Meg again. I believe that the intention is, if you all approve this report, that we will see if City Council would like it submitted to them as your annual report of your accomplishments for last year.
Right. Again, Commissioners, are there any questions of Ms. Porter? There appear to be none. Thank you.
Yes, yes, I do have one. This is Sheri Thaxton.
Okay.
Ms. Porter, did you say it was sent to us along with the package?
Yes, it should have been. It should, yes.
Okay, because I'm looking for it and I don't see it.
Don't see it, okay.
Ma'am.
Yeah, it should have been the very last thing in your package, Sheri. If not, I'll email you one, but it should have been the very last thing in the packet.
Okay, because I had one, two, three, four attachments. And diligently looking for it, but I don't see it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll make sure you get a copy. That's no problem.
Thank you very, very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Okay, we're going to move along with the agenda. Our next item on our agenda today is CBE-21-01 Mimosa Cove. Rodney Flores, Opinnacle Group Engineering, Inc., on behalf of William S. Dobson Jr., requests a Chesapeake Bay exception for an attached garage, swimming pool, chicken coop, trellis, and associated best management practices, BMPs, at 801 Mimosa Road. The property is zoned urban residential UR and is further described as Tax Map 637, Parcel 6.1. The Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan recommends high-density, single-family residential development for the property. The staff coordinator is Stacy Porter. This item has been placed on the April 6th agenda and will not be heard today. Our next item is our planning.
I have a quick overview. I'm sorry. I'm just going to provide a quick couple of notes about that particular one.
Okay, nope.
Okay, and again, this is Stacy Porter with the Planning Department. And I did want to provide just a quick update on this application. As you could see, as Ms. Jackson did say, and as you can see on the slide, we are recommending the deferral of the application. Staff anticipates the supplemental will have a major amendment. And we are requesting some additional information from the applicant as it relates to the Americans with Disabilities Act. The garage and swimming pool, I believe, would qualify for the ADA classification, but we want more information from the applicant on that. So we're not denying them use of the property. So we respectfully request that you do not open the public hearing on this item today, being that we are anticipating a significant amendment to the application. We'd like for you all just to go ahead and vote to defer the matter until your April meeting. And then the staff will go ahead and resend the legal advertisement as well as letters to the adjacent property owners on this particular item. But I just want to give that quick update.
Stacy, I have a question about this.
You sure can ask.
Is this an after-the-fact application?
No, no, this is not. No, not at all. In fact, I had a site visit initially with not the current project agent. It was a previous project agent where the applicant wanted to get some general information, and then they decided to apply for the Chesapeake Bay exception. But no, they have done no work out there. Not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioners, any additional questions of Ms. Porter? Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next item on the agenda is the Planning and Zoning Training, which will be presented by Julie Chop, Senior Planner.
Okay, hi, Planning Commissioners. This is Julie Chop, Senior Planner with the City of Portsmouth. This presentation will give a brief introduction to planning and zoning in Virginia, and more specifically, the city of Portsmouth. Under the Virginia Constitution, all city and county parties' powers are delegations of authority granted by the General Assembly. And unless otherwise indicated by statute of the Constitution are vested in City Council. The General Assembly has granted counties and cities numerous powers to provide for comprehensive planning and to regulate the use and development of land by adopting zoning and subdivision ordinances. A city's powers are limited by the rule of statutory construction known as the Dillon Rule. The Dillon Rule limits the city's powers to those that are expressly granted by the General Assembly, those that may be necessarily or fairly implied from those powers expressly granted, and those that are essential and indispensable. Conversely, some states exercise a Home Rule statutory construction. Under Home Rule, a county or municipality can do anything that's not specifically denied by the state constitution, the General Assembly, or the charter itself. Virginia is a Dillon Rule state. Okay. A Planning Commission is an administrative entity established by City Council pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2210. The Planning Commission has specific powers related to individual development applications. On legislative matters such as comprehensive plan amendments, subdivision text amendments, zoning text amendments, zoning map amendments, and use permits, the commission is advisory to the City Council and makes recommendations to the City Council. The Planning Commission also has the power to initiate comprehensive plan subdivision text, zoning text, and zoning map amendments. The Chesapeake Bay Preservation Overlay and Subdivision Ordinances designate the Planning Commission as a decision-making body for major preliminary subdivision plots and Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exceptions and Appeals. Many types of land use proposals that come before City Council and Planning Commission require that notice of the proposal is published and that individual notice of the proposal be provided to interested persons or entities. The purpose of providing notice of a land use proposal is to give those property owners most directly affected an opportunity to be heard. In most cases, the notice is a precursor to one or more public hearings before the City Council or Planning Commission. Use permits, rezonings, variances, special exceptions, and zoning appeals require published notice once a week for two successive weeks in a published newspaper. Rezonings, use permits, variances, and special exceptions also require written notice be mailed at least five days prior to the public hearing to the owners of the parcel involved and the owners of all abutting property, meaning properties that share a property line with the subject property and the properties immediately across the street from the affected property. Notification of a proposed application is also required 30 days prior to the public hearing to all military installations for a subject property that is within 3,000 feet of a military installation. The Portsmouth Planning Department sends notification for all applications to the military, regardless of their distance from the military installation. In addition to published notice in the Virginian Pilot or Bridges and mailed letters to affected and abutting properties, as well as a signed affidavit stating the property owner notifications have been mailed, the Portsmouth Planning Department, in coordination with the Engineering Department, also place a sign on the subject property indicating the date and location of the public hearing and the type of application. An example of the notification sign is shown on this slide. This notice is not required by the state or the city. The application proposal and public hearing information are also posted on the Planning Department webpage. An example legal ad is shown on this slide depicting the legal notice that is included in the public hearing notifications. Zoning is the power to regulate the use and design of land. The scope of a locality's zoning power is set forth in Section 15.2-2280 of the Code of Virginia. City Council zoning actions must be fairly debatable, meaning that there must be some reasonable basis for council's decisions that is tied to the use or design of land. Zoning in Portsmouth is regulated by the City's zoning ordinance, which consists of a text and a zoning map. Within the City's zoning ordinance is a use table, which sets out the allowable uses for each zoning district. The use table lists land uses and indicates whether they are permitted by right within a given district, designated by a P for permitted, require a use permit designated by a U, or are prohibited within a given district designated by a blank. Uses that are permitted by right are subject to other requirements, but the use itself is permitted by right. One of the standard zoning tools in Portsmouth is called a use permit. A use permit applies to certain types of uses that are recognized in the zoning ordinance as potentially more impactful than others. As a result, the zoning ordinance provides that a developer must obtain approval from City Council through a use permit before developing the use. For use permits, at the Planning Commission public hearing, Planning Commission provides a recommendation to City Council. Unlike some other localities in Portsmouth, City Council conducts two readings. The first reading is the public hearing, and council conducts an initial vote on the application. A second reading typically at the subsequent City Council meeting. City Council holds the final vote on the application. City Council's grant of a use permit may be subject to suitable regulations and safeguards or conditions regarding the location, character, and other features of the use permit, as may be deemed necessary in City Council's legislative discretion to ensure compliance with the general intent and purpose of the ordinance and to prevent or minimize adverse effects from the use. The conditions do not have to be agreed upon by the applicant, but must bear a reasonable relationship to legitimate land use concerns generated by the use. Staff compiles a staff report for the use permit request outlining and analyzing pertinent information regarding the proposed use. Planning staff prepares a list of proposed conditions for consideration by the Planning Commission and City Council. Planning Commission and City Council have the ability to add or modify conditions if they feel it is appropriate. On the second reading of the application, City Council adopts a resolution if the use permit is approved. Another standard zoning tool used in Portsmouth is a rezoning, also known as a zoning map amendment. A rezoning amends the zoning map and changes the zoning district in which the land is situated. For rezoning hearings, Planning Commission provides a recommendation to City Council at a public hearing, and then the application is heard at a City Council public hearing with a final vote at the second reading. While use permits are accomplished with a resolution, rezonings are adopted as ordinances by City Council. There are two types of rezonings, a standard rezoning and a conditional rezoning. A standard rezoning is the change from one zoning district to another without any conditions. This slide shows an example of a staff report that was drafted for a standard rezoning in a City Council-approved ordinance. The second type of rezonings are conditional rezonings or zoning map amendments with proppers. As part of a rezoning application, an applicant may voluntarily proffer reasonable conditions to the subject property in a written statement. No applicant is required to make any proffer. Any proffers must be made prior to the start of any public hearing before City Council on the application. Once the public hearing has begun, City Council may accept amended proffers if they do not materially affect the overall proposal. All conditions included as proppers must comply with all applicable limitations within the Code of Virginia, including the rezoning must give rise to the need for the condition. They must have reasonable relation to the rezoning. They must not mandate dedication of property for public facility. They must not require the creation of a property owners association. They must not include payment of or construction of off-site improvements, except those provided for in Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2241. The condition must be related to the physical development or operation of the property, and the conditions must be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. This slide provides an example of a conditional rezoning or a zoning map amendment with proppers. A sample staff report is shown and an example of a proffer letter that must be submitted with an application in order to include proppers. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Please feel free to email me at chopj@portsmouthva.gov if you have any comments or questions as well.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Ms. Chop?
Yes, this is Peter Youngblood. Ms. Chop, are you providing this to City Council?
Um. But is Bob on the line? I'm not sure. I mean, we'd be happy to.
I'll answer that question. Good afternoon. This is Bob Baldwin. I apologize for my tardiness in joining the meeting. I was having some Teams computer problems here at the beginning. This presentation was intended specifically for the Planning Commission, and we'll have it posted on the city's planning department webpage. But as of this moment, there is no planner, has been no request for us to present this to the Council.
I would, this is Peter Youngblood again. I'd like to recommend that our council liaison present this, at least portions of this, to the new members of City Council, because I remember what appeared to be a violation of the proffer conditions in a January council meeting. And I'd like to make sure that our new council members don't get in hot water by breaking the law inadvertently, specifically when they start asking a developer what he's going to do for the city outside of his development as a condition of granting permission for the development. So I just think that we need to help council members any way we can to avoid getting into hot water. Thank you.
Commissioner Barnes, I see you have your hand up.
Oh, yes. Well, I guess basically he already answered the question. I just want to know if I could, like, is there any way we could go back and, you know, take a look at it again? The presentation?
Sure, we can. We'll post it on the City, the Planning Department website as well. We can email it to whoever would like to see it. Okay, thank you.
And this is Bob Baldwin again. And we would certainly tell all the Planning Commissioners, we'd like to have some one-on-one conversations with staff so we can answer any questions, help speed your education along on some of the nuances of the zoning laws and processes and regulations. We're always more than willing to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Commissioners, any additional questions for Ms. Chop? Let me just take a moment and recognize Mr. Baldwin, who is the Director of Planning Commission, for joining us. And welcoming Commissioner Barnes. Pleasure to have you with us. I'd also like to make sure that we recognize that we do have a council liaison with us, Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke. Welcome, Councilwoman Burke. Mr. Baldwin?
Okay.
Thank you, Glenn, to be here.
We're going to continue with Ms. Chop. Our next item on our agenda is a refresher update on 4358 Greenwood Drive. Ms. Chop?
Okay. Okay. Hi again. Give me one second, please. Okay, so I'm going to give you a little bit of history on the property at 4358 Greenwood Boulevard, which is the subject of application UP-2103, which you guys will hear about in the public hearing. Okay, so the property at 4358 Greenwood Drive is the former site of the Tazewell Park Apartments, also known as Bonavilla Apartments, that were built in 1960. The Bonavilla Apartments consisted of 20 single-story multifamily buildings containing 103 dwelling units. Numerous Maintenance and Nuisance Code violations were issued regarding large accumulations of trash, debris, and weeds on the property. In 2010, the buildings on the property were declared derelict. Measures were taken to correct the violation, but the property continued to
Measures were taken to correct the violation, but the property continued to experience illegal dumping on the site. After additional violations, the development was demolished in October of 2013. Building slabs, unimproved roadways, and scattered vegetation and utility poles remain on the property. In 2009, excuse, in 2009, Mark Whitaker, manager of, manager for New Bethel Development LLC, requested a housing permit, HP-09-02, at 4358 Greenwood Drive to construct six three-story apartment buildings to be named the Evergreens of Bethel, with 234 units for a proposed density of approximately 16.9 dwelling units per acre. The proposal included approximately 498 parking spaces and a 7,000-square-foot community clubhouse with a fitness center, theater, game room, conference room, and swimming pool. Housing permit HP-09-02 was adopted with conditions by city council on March 24, 2009. The Evergreens at Bethel multifamily development project was approved through site plan review. However, the approvals for this project have expired and the development never came to fruition. In May of 2016, a multifamily developer named Herman and Kittle filed an application for a use permit, UP-16-08, to develop the Point at Greenwood, a 280-unit multifamily development with 22 buildings at 4358 Greenwood Drive. The density of the proposed development was 20.3 dwelling units per acre. The proposal included a 3,800-square-foot clubhouse, a swimming pool, 399 parking spaces, and 22 parking garage spaces available for lease. Planning staff recommended approval with conditions of use permit of UP-16-08, citing the proposal's consistency with the comprehensive plan and compliance with the zoning ordinance. In June of 2016, the United Civic League of Cavalier Manor submitted a letter of opposition to Herman and Kittle's use permit for the Point at Greenwood multifamily development. The Civic League had several issues with the development, including traffic concerns, security plan concerns, the proposal's density was too high, there was no playground included with the proposal, they had property management concerns, concerns with the developers' level of experience, and the community expressed their desire for single-family development on the property. The United Civic League of Cavalier Manor voted unanimously to oppose the project at a special call meeting on June 27, 2016. In September of 2016, city council denied use permit application UP-16-08. In October of 2016, Herman and Kittle filed a lawsuit against the city in Portsmouth Circuit Court. The the court ruled in favor of the city and stating that the use permit on residential properties was not limiting and a use permit could be and was legally required. Thank you, and planning staff will stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Ms. Chop at this time?
Yes, this is Peter Youngblood. I have one question. Ms. Chop, does the current application differ very much from the last time this was proposed? I notice it's still 280 units. And these are four-story buildings, but I can't recall the disposition on the last time this came before us.
Um, well. So there's a lot of, so because the United Civic League of Cavalier Manor, they submitted a request to city council to change the the comprehensive plan, future land use map designation for 4358 Greenwood Drive. So that parcel is now designated for a single-family residential with low to medium density. So it, the, the current application does not comply with that designation. But I will speak more on the details of that application during the public hearing.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions from Ms. Chop at this time? Please remember that she will be making a presentation at the regular meeting on this application.
Think Mr. Williams went out on us.
I'm back.
Yeah.
That's what the little cartoon says, "I'm back." Mr. Baldwin, are you going to talk about the resolution?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize again. For some reason, my computer decided it does not want me attending the meeting today. It's kicking me out. Hopefully, I can get through a sentence without getting booted out. So, um, yeah, so as far as the resolution is concerned, as the Planning Commission is aware, you know, we just recently went through the process of rewriting the city's zoning ordinance, working with the Planning Commission and city council, and incorporated within that was the rewrite of the sign regulations, which we had done a few years earlier following the Supreme Court case that had banned a lot of the standard zoning practices for sign regulations. And for example, if you looked at our old sign regulations, you'd see a listing of signs for institutional uses or things of that nature. What the Supreme Court said at that time was that you can't regulate by content. And so, you know, you had to write a much more, and I don't want to call it generic, but a much more standardized type of sign regulations. And those were adopted. They've been in effect for a few years and we didn't do a whole lot of modification to those as we went through the rewrite of the zoning ordinance. However, you know, now that we've gotten to the end of that, we realize there's some, some changes that really, we really need to be made as we go back and look at how those signs are are impacted, the types of signs are impacted. By the way, the zoning use table is structured. And for example, that's really, you know, a lot to do with our, you know, a lot of mixed uses we have in which uses that would normally not be in districts in which there's some sort of residential use are in these mixed-use districts. So we have some, for example, might be a convenience store or something with gas pumps. And over the course of time, we've started to receive a few more requests for these digital signs. And I'm going to start probably the first thing on the list, the digital electronic types of signs, smaller ones. I know you've seen a few of them around town. And they're becoming much more of a standard, common practice. But our zoning ordinance was still based on the days in which that wasn't too common. So looking ahead, recognizing we're having, going to have some institutional level problems, primarily when the schools start going to try to change their signs to digital. And they're in, basically in our classification residential zoning where these electronic signs aren't allowed. Residents start to have a lot of trouble with those. We've already been having some problems with some, some larger churches, and they're on major roads like a commercial development, but they're not zoned that way and they're having issues. So and looking at that, we just realized we need to go back and make some modifications into our sign regulations, primarily to deal with these electronic and digital signs. And so we do have a resolution before you that includes our, the number one issue on there is, you know, some processes to allow the expanded use of these automatic changeable copy signs. As I've indicated, they've really become more of a standard as opposed to an odd, kind of an odd sign. And so we'd like to go back. What the exception is noted in it, we would not want these signs to be permitted where you might have single-family houses, so every neighbor's not putting up an electronic sign in their front yard of some kind. So we do want to, you know, restrict that from, you know, really the, the, the what we would call the group living or, you know, residential living within those districts. So that's, that's one item. Along the same line, you know, we've got some, we've been trying to take in the zoning ordinance, some some options for people to request for relief and they end up in a non-conforming status. You may, for those people who understand when, when somebody establishes a use or a building or a sign, then they do it legally under the sign regulations in place at the time. That at any time which the city then changes its regulations, you could put someone into what they consider a legal non-conforming status, which is the sign is legal, but it no longer conforms with the regulations. And so we're in a lot of situations where, because of the fact that the zoning ordinance has been changed twice in the last 10 years, we're concerned we've created a fairly sizable potential number of non-conformities out there. So we created in the new zoning ordinance some special exception processes where people can request relief through the, more to zoning appeals to deal with some of those circumstances. And, and some of these non-conforming type signs would end up in that same category. So we want to take a look at that. Same would apply for billboards. We've got a few billboards around town, old static billboards that are in need of being renovated, updated, repaired, modernized. And of course, the billboard companies are looking to move away from these standard paper. Billboard signs want to go to the more electronic. We do not have a process for people to do that when it's a non-conforming signs. We'd like to look at that one, that one as well. And then there's a couple of other, you know, one of really a primary item out here. And this is really a, kind of an oversight or whatever, when the new parking standards are put into the new zoning ordinance, the, the number of parking spaces per unit in multifamily was supposed to be at one and a half, and it ended up in the final version at two per unit. And so we want to go back and, and propose a code amendment, put the parking requirement back down to what it had been before and what we were intending it to be. So that's kind of a run-through of these code amendments. What will happen? On your agenda today, under, under new business, we'd like the Planning Commission to consider passing this resolution. This does not change any regulations. What it does is it authorizes staff to go back and prepare appropriate code amendments. They can come back through the public hearing process for both Planning Commission, city council consideration as, as Julie Chop was describing earlier. This is one of those processes when, I think a lot of people don't understand, but when, when there's an interest in amending the zoning ordinance, city staff doesn't have any authority to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance. We either have to come to the Planning Commission or go to city council, or someone else can come to the city council and ask. The staff cannot unilaterally initiate code amendments. So what we're asking here is for, for Planning Commission's approval of this resolution to allow us to go back and, and develop the proper and appropriate potential code amendments for your consideration at a future meeting. And again, that would be conducted with a full public hearing as we do with all code amendments. So be glad to answer any questions you may have. I'll make one final statement. One of the comments we had made back in, probably in the November, December timeframe, when the, when the zoning ordinance was going through the processes, that, you know, we are going to, we're going to be in a process, we're going to have to look at making some tweaks as we go, as we identify little things here and there. Obviously, you rewrite an entire zoning ordinance. We don't expect it to be perfect, and so we're, you know, we're always evaluating that. And also, as you may or may not be aware, almost every year, the General Assembly goes back and changes some part of the state code that affects us in terms of the zoning. Or to give you an example of one that's going to be pending out there, won't come soon, but if you've been following the General Assembly this session, where they're looking to legalize marijuana use, for example, as a retail business, there's going to be a zoning component to that. I'm not sure what that'll look like. But in some future year, it will be this year, probably next year, the zoning code would likely need to be amended to comply with whatever the state does with the, the planning regulations up there. So with that, I'll stop talking. Be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
Commissioners, are there any questions for Mr. Baldwin? There appear to be none. Ms. Jackson?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Does that conclude all the items for our work agenda?
That does conclude our agenda for our work session.
Regina, I might, I might butt in, this is Bob Baldwin. I might butt in for one moment. And I apologize again because I was unable to get in here for the, the initial presentation of the Planning Commission annual report. What we would like to get from, from Planning Commission, you don't need to vote on it. You know, we would like to be, you know, get your concurrence with forwarding that annual report to city council. If there's something you wanted to, for us to modify or change or bring back, you know, we're certainly willing to do that, but other than that, if you're satisfied with what's in that annual report, we would like to get a consensus that it's okay for us to forward that report on the city council.
So, well, if, if we, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask if that was going to require a motion to be made?
No. Now, this is purely a sort of administrative function. If you had some objection, want us to go back and look at it during work session, we go back. Otherwise, we're just, we're just going to forward it on to city council. There's no requirement for formal action on that.
Commissioners, are there any objections to forwarding the report? There being none, Mr. Baldwin, we concur.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Very good.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Does that conclude our work session?
That, that does conclude our work session. I have 1:16, so by 1:25, we're going to get back on and wait for our 1:30 meeting to start.
Now, is, is Ms. Pedding just going to leave the platform open or?
No, sir. We're going to stay right here.
We're going to stay right here?
Yeah, yeah. We're going to leave the meeting open, so you all just turn your cameras off, mute your microphones, and we'll be back on here. We're going to leave the meeting right in.
I need to go get another set of glasses. We'll see you back at, at 1:20.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Albert Williams, chairman of the Portsmouth Planning Commission, and I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, March 2, 2021, being held in the Microsoft Team platform via video conference. Please note, this meeting will be recorded and feature public comments. Commissioners, ask to mute their microphones when they're not speaking and to verbally identify yourself prior to making any comments. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, this is Regina Jackson, planning and zoning coordinator. I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present and can hear me by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Present.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Present.
Commissioner G. Commissioner G. Commissioner Coleman?
Present.
Commissioner Page?
Present.
Commissioner Barnes?
Here.
Six members of the Planning Commission are present. The public meeting of Planning Commission is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Northram's March 12, 2020 executive order due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of COVID-19. A quorum of the commission is not physically present in the meeting location, but members have joined remotely. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you will find posted on the city's planning department webpage with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will be recorded and feature public comment. Even if members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, Planning Commission is convening by video conference via Microsoft Teams app as posted on the city's website, identifying how the public may join. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you have the minutes of the February 2, 2021 public hearing, do any commissioners have any corrections or changes to the minutes? If so, please state your name before stating the changes. If there aren't any changes, we're in need of a motion to approve the minutes.
This is Commissioner Acasio-G. I move for acceptance of the minutes.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
This is Carrie Thaxton. I have a second.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the February 2, 2021 public hearing. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
This, the minutes are approved by a vote of seven to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Please note that our next scheduled public hearing is Tuesday, April 6, 2021, at 1:30 p.m. The public hearing will be held in the Microsoft Teams platform via video conference. Items reviewed today will be presented to city council for action at their April 13, 2021, or April 27, 2021 virtual meeting, or as otherwise noted. We also ask that you mute your microphones when you're not speaking, and to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments. Our first public hearing items are deferred from our February 2, 2021 Planning Commission meeting with respect to Z-20-11 West Haven and U.P.-20-12 West Haven. The applicant has withdrawn his applications. Our next item, CBE-21-01 Mimosa Cove. Rodney Flores of Pinnacle Group Engineering, Inc., on behalf of William S. Dobson, Jr., requests a Chesapeake Bay exception for an attached garage, swimming pool, chicken coop, trellis, and associated best management practices, B.M.P.S. At 801 Mimosa Road, the property is zoned urban residential UR, and is further described as Tax Map 637, Parcel 6.1. The Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan recommends high-density, single-family residential development for the property. The staff coordinator for this item is Stacy Porter. As was mentioned in the work session, we will not open the public hearing on this item. As noted by staff, it will be re-advertised for the April 6, 2021 Planning Commission.
Yes, this is Stacy Porter. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Yes, and as we did discuss in your work session today, staff is recommending the deferral of the application. We do anticipate a major amendment of the application and are asking that today you all vote to first not open the public hearing and to defer the matter to your April meeting.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to defer, a motion and a second to defer this item to the April 6 meeting.
Commissioners, we are in need of a motion to defer CBE-21-01 to the April meeting?
This is Chairman, this is Primus Page. I make a motion that we defer the matter to of CBE-21-01 till April meeting.
Is there a second?
Commissioner G, a second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to defer CBE-21-01 to our April 6 meeting. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yeah.
This item is deferred to our April Planning Commission meeting. Our next item, U.P.-21-01 Mount Herman. Robert C. Barclay, the fourth Esquire of Cooper, Spong, and Davis, P.C., on behalf of the Mount Herman Community Improvement Foundation, requests a use permit at 3001 High Street for an entertainment establishment. The property is zoned general mixed-use GMU, and is further described as Tax Map 199, Parcel 11. The Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan recommends commercial development. Our staff coordinator is Stacy Porter. With the staff coordinator for this application, please come forward and present your application at this time.
Yes, and I do have one quick technical issue. Could you give me just two minutes, and I'm going to come right on?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, while we're waiting, Commissioner G has joined. He was marked as not here when I initially called the roll, but just for the record, Commissioner G is on the meeting today.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
I am back. Thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, planning commissioners. This is Stacy Porter, a senior planner with the planning department. The proposal for you today is to allow for an event venue that reserved the Mount Herman community. The applicant's requested entertainment establishment would be housed within a one-story brick structure built in 1963 that is the former location of a tax preparation and accounting The property is approximately .23 acres in size and contains an 18 space surface lot to the rear of the building. I'll now provide an overview of the land uses in the vicinity of the parcel. To the north is an autozone retail store, Zone General Mixed Use, GMU. To the east are single-family residences within the Mount Herman neighborhood, Zone Urban Residential UR, and High Density Urban Residential URH. To the south are additional single-family residences in the Mount Herman neighborhood. To the west is a medical office, Zone General Mixed Use, GMU. This is the floor plan, which was provided by the applicant, which shows a full interior remodeling of the structure to accommodate new office space for the Mount Herman Community Improvement Foundation staff, a 1,300-square-foot event area, a commercial kitchen, and Americans with Disabilities Act compliant restrooms. As is required by code for entertainment establishments, soundproof doors and entryways have been included in the proposed improvements. The event area would accommodate events daily between 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. Proposed events include receptions, meetings, and private parties. Staff of the Improvement Foundation would oversee all events at the venue. As was noted in the staff report, the applicant's design professional determined a building capacity of 93 persons. However, the city building official will make a final determination on the capacity. This is the site survey provided by the applicant. After a review by engineering staff, it was determined that the parking lot contained 18 vehicle spaces, which included 17 standard 9-by-18-foot spaces and one handicap space, which was not adequately sized to meet ADA requirements. According to the zoning ordinance, the facility is required to provide 14 off-street vehicle parking spaces and two bicycle spaces. Should the use permit be approved, the applicant would be required to comply with all code-related parking lot standards. This site survey indicates that their proposed 5-by-8 dumpster pad would be placed at the rear of the parking lot, which is shown at the top of the survey. Staff evaluated the proposal against the goals and recommendations of the comprehensive plan. According to the plan, the property is located in a district character area. This area promotes mixed-use, pedestrian-friendly development. The proposed commercial use is a walkable destination for those residing in the Mount Herman residential neighborhood. The plan also indicated that the parcel is included in the mixed-district redevelopment-focused area, an area that should include a mix of residential and commercial uses. The proposed entertainment establishment, offering an amenity for the Mount Herman neighborhood, meets the intent of the plan. Further, the proposed entertainment establishment provides a compatible commercial amenity that contributes to the Mount Herman residence's sense of place. With the conditions listed in the staff report, planning staff finds that the proposal meets the requirements of zoning ordinance, along with the goals and recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends the approval of the use permit request, and this concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Commissioners, I will call each of your names to determine if you have any questions or concerns. I have none. Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, sir. Ms. Porter, did you get any comments from the neighbors, and specifically, did you hear anything from Mr. Charles Harrell, the president of the Mount Herman Civic League?
Oh, well, this is a perfect question. Actually, the applicant is applying, the applicant is the Mount Herman Improvement Association, so they, of course, are in full favor of this.
I didn't understand it that way. The Mount Herman Civic League, they may or may not be part of the Mount Herman Improvement area. If they're one and the same, then I don't have any problem with it.
And they are, and I'm sorry, I want to make that clear. They are the same, correct.
My only other thought is, you've got a place that's got a capacity of almost 100 with 18 parking spaces, and that means that we're going to have overflow into the neighborhood. Once again, if the neighbors are okay with that, then I don't see any problem. I note that we did not send notices to anybody on Chancellor Street, which is just to the south of this property. If they're members of the Civic League, then they already know about it, they obviously haven't complained, so I guess my concerns are nothing to worry about. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, but no, great comment, absolutely.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Sorry, I have none.
Commissioner G?
I have no concerns.
Commissioner Coleman?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Page?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Barnes?
None at this time.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the public hearing on item U.P.-21-01. Citizens will be called upon to provide comments or questions, and are asked to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments, and to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. Will the applicant for U.P.-21-01 come forward to provide any additional information or comments? Please state your name and address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Robert Barclay, and I'm the attorney for the Mount Herman Community Improvement Foundation. My business address is 200 High Street, Suite 500, Portsmouth, Virginia, 23704. And I submitted the application on behalf of the foundation, and I'm here just to fill you in a little bit more on the history of the foundation and what their intentions are for the property. The Mount Herman Community Improvement Foundation goes back to the late 1970s, early 1980s. It was originally formed as a community nonprofit organization that owned and operated a elderly housing complex in Mount Herman on Gothic Street. And they operated that from early, its construction in the early 80s, up until the last year and a half, when they sold that facility to another operator who is going to operate it in a similar fashion. And that facility needed a fair amount of capital improvement, and it was easier to have a new entity come in and purchase that and do those improvements to that facility. And then the foundation could take those proceeds from the sale and put them back to use within the Mount Herman community to continue to provide services to the community. And the leadership of the foundation identified this building as a great opportunity to bring it back into active use and to benefit the neighborhood. Previously, this building, starting in 1963, it was the Old Homestead Savings and Loan Association. Somebody may have in the city a long time may recall that. Later on, the building was purchased by an accounting firm, I believe Mr. Treber operated that for a number of years, and then another individual bought it from him. And then since then, that accounting firm has moved out, and so the improvement association and foundation bought the building for Mr. Treber, and with the vision of turning it into a community asset. And so as the staff report said, the front spaces in the building would be used for offices for the foundation, and then the rear would be devoted to a community hall, which could provide a venue for various activities and receptions and meetings. In addition to that, part of the upgrades include a commercial kitchen, from which the foundation can continue its work to prepare and provide meals to elderly people and shut-ins and other folks in the Mount Herman community who are unable to cook for themselves. So that's pretty much the So that's pretty much the vision. We needed a use permit under the code to create this and to be considered an entertainment establishment. And so that's why we're here today to ask for the use permit. And I believe Alvin Ely, who is the current chairman of the association, if he's on the meeting, then he may be able to address any additional questions you may have, as well as myself. So that concludes my comments, and thank you very much.
Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any questions for Mr. Barclay. I have none. Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, this is Peter Youngblood. Mr. Barclay, welcome back. I'd like to clarify, are the Mount Herman Civic League and the, golly, the Mount Herman Community Improvement Foundation, are they pretty much one and the same?
I believe that is the case, but I would have to defer to Mr. Ely, who I hope was on the meeting as well, that I think he could probably clarify that better than I can.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Thaxton?
I have no questions.
Commissioner G?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes, thank you. This is Commissioner Coleman. Mr. Barclay, I do have one question for you. According to the proposal, it says the establishment will provide a facility for Mount Herman residents to host their civic gatherings and special events. Is this just for Mount Herman residents, or would this be open to anyone in the public to rent?
I believe it'll be open to the public to rent. But obviously, the emphasis would be to serve people within the community.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Page?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Barnes?
I have no comment.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item U P dash twenty-one dash zero one. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone on the call who would like to address this application, you may do so at this time. If you will come forward, state your name and address for the record. Press star six to unmute your mic, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any more discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second. Commissioners, before making the motion, please identify yourself.
This is Commissioner G. I move for acceptance of U P twenty-one dash zero one.
Is there a second?
This is Sherri Thaxton. I second that motion.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve U P dash twenty-one dash zero one. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yeah.
This item is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Our next item, U P dash twenty-one dash zero-two, I two sixty-four, one sixty-four, M L King Expressway. Kenjo Outdoor LLC requests a use permit to construct a new fourteen-by-forty-eight, six-hundred-and-seventy-two-square-foot, fifty-foot-high, permanent freestanding outdoor advertising sign billboard on a one-point-nine-one-four-acre lot located at fourteen-twenty Columbus Avenue near the I two sixty-four, one sixty-four, M L King Expressway, westbound ramp, X six-six. The property is Zone Industrial I N, and the future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property as heavy industrial. The property is owned by William A. Hall and is further described as Tax Map two oh eight, parcel two-point-one. The staff coordinator is Carl Jackson. Will the staff coordinator for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Hi, yes, Regina. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Planning Commissioners. The property is located in a constrained industrial area beneath I two sixty-four and the one sixty-four M L K King Expressway westbound ramp, wedged between two large concrete pillars that limit the development potential of the site and the surrounding area. From the map, you can see here the property is zoned industrial, and the future land use map for Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates the property as light industrial. East of the property is an overpass for the I two sixty-four slash Martin Luther King Expressway westbound ramp and a stormwater pond zoned industrial. West of the property is the Martin Luther King Expressway mainline overpass. North of the property is the merger of the Expressway mainline ramp, and south of the property is Columbus Avenue and Interstate two sixty-four. These surrounding properties are right-of-way used for transportation. The proposed billboard will be fifty feet in height above grade and will be constructed of durable weatherproof materials. The billboard will have one sign face and will be visible only to westbound traffic traveling on I two sixty-four west, as you can see from this conceptual view. The proposed billboard will have no additional advertisement on the rear of the structure as seen from this conceptual of the rear of the structure from Martin Luther King Expressway. The property and proposed location of the billboard are more particularly shown on this conceptual site plan and survey submitted by the applicant. The billboard will be digital and have a light emitting diode or L E D display with an automatic changeable sign face that will comply with the zoning ordinance, state and federal law. Based on this lighting study, as you can see here, the area will see an almost undetectable difference in ambient light after the installation of the digital L E D billboard. The billboard, particularly at the base, shall be landscaped based on this submitted concept, and if approved, the applicant shall submit a finalized landscape plan that satisfies the city's reasonable request. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's request for the with-proposed conditions to construct a new fourteen-by-forty-eight, six-hundred-and-seventy-two-square-foot-wide, fifty-foot-high, permanent freestanding outdoor advertising sign or billboard as a proposal does not conflict with the goals of the Comprehensive Plan for Light Industrial Areas and complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And I am also available for questions.
Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any questions of Mr. Jackson. I have none. Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, of course I do. Mr. Jackson, just for information, what sort of income does this provide for the city?
Well, sir, I'm sure that the property itself will be taxable, and I'm sure the city treasurers or the assessors office could give an assessment of what the tax value would be.
So this would be, I guess, an improvement to the property, and that would change the assessed value. Does that sound logical?
Yes, yes, sir. The site itself is very constrained and has been undeveloped for some time, so to have any kind of improvement to the site would definitely add to the value of the property.
Great, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Thaxton?
I have no questions at this moment.
Commissioner G?
So I actually do have some questions on this one. Do we have any rules with regards to how many billboards will allow in the area? I know that tends to be one of the problems in some areas, that they become overrun with billboards.
Not at this time. We don't have any local restrictions, but there is another process that V D O has for signs that are located near the interstate, and they might have some restrictions with that.
And the applicant will be presenting, right? Because I have a few questions for them as well.
Yeah, yeah, the applicant is on the line, and they'll be able to answer those questions. And we have also conditioned that they do apply for that V D O permit as well for the sign.
Right, great, thank you.
Commissioner Coleman?
No questions.
Commissioner Page?
No questions.
Commissioner Barnes?
I have one question.
Sure.
Okay, so would there be any glare into the houses just in the distance of the billboard?
Not that we're aware. Based on the lighting study that was submitted, the lighting will be basically undetectable from what we have out there now, and any glare will be directed toward the interstate or the highway itself, not toward people's homes.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the public hearing on item U P dash twenty-one dash zero-two. Citizens will be called upon to provide comments or questions and are asked to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments and to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. Will the applicant for U P dash twenty-one dash zero-two come forward to provide any additional information or comments? Please state your name and address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tyler Rose. I'm a local land use attorney with the law firm Williams Mullen. My business address is two-two-two Central Park Avenue, Suite seventeen hundred, Virginia Beach, Virginia. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Kenjo Outdoor LLC. And joining me today in support of the application is Mr. Dan Nielsen, who is an engineer with Kenjo Outdoor, and Mr. William Hall, who is the property owner. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Carl Jackson and the rest of the planning department for all their hard work on this application and for the recommendation of approval. We agree with their assessment of the project and the application and agree with the conditions that they've proposed. Ultimately, this project and application is about putting an unused property with limited development potential to work for the city of Portsmouth. The property is uniquely situated because it's surrounded on all sides by three stretches of highway, and it's wedged between large concrete pillars. While this positioning may diminish the desirability to develop the property for traditional industrial uses, it's a prime location for a digital billboard because of the opportunity for high visibility in a high-traffic corridor. The significant majority of advertising on billboards is actually from local businesses, and that advertising often provides very important and consistent visibility for those local businesses. And the billboards also provide an important public safety function to the communities they serve by providing a way to broadly disseminate important emergency information. In particular, for instance, this particular billboard will be able to instantly broadcast Amber Alert messages and display other important city information. Because this billboard will be located at the intersection of two main arteries of the city, I two sixty-four west and Martin Luther King Expressway, will provide an opportunity for increased exposure to those local businesses on the west side of the city and to the north side of the city. It would also be able to alert a significant number of residents and travelers to emergency information if needed as they travel through the center of the city. Additionally, the presence of the billboard on the property as a primary use limits further improvements on the site and presents an opportunity to improve the landscaping aesthetic and tree canopy cover of the area. And the applicant is committed to working with the city to provide adequate landscaping on the site that helps the city to meet its landscaping goals. The applicant has engaged the landscape architect to help in the design and development of the site. As Mr. Jackson, the staff report said, the billboard will not have a negative impact on traffic safety in the area. It's consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and future land use map and meets all dimensional setback requirements imposed by the zoning ordinance, state law, and federal law. So in conclusion, this is a wonderful opportunity to take an unused and largely undevelopable piece of property and put it to work for the economic, environmental, and public safety interests of the city of Portsmouth. And that's why we respectfully request the commission to vote to recommend approval of this application. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Mr. Nielsen with Kenjo Outdoor for my background of his company, if I would be allowed to do that.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dan Nielsen. I'm the co-owner of Kenjo Outdoor Advertising, and I'm the applicant. Again, thank you for all your hard work on this project. My partner and I are both electrical engineers by degree, but we've been in the billboard business now for about five years. We're currently trying to expand our business in Virginia. It's a growing area. We really like it. We've got a couple of projects in the area, Newport News, Chesapeake, Norfolk, to name a few. We're excited about this location. We're looking forward to working with the city. I think Tyler and Carl have described our application well, but I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have. Again, thank you.
Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any additional questions of the applicant. I have none. Commissioner Youngblood?
I have none.
Commissioner Thaxton?
I have none.
Commissioner G?
I have a few, and I apologize in advance. I have to work with out-of-home quite a bit, so that's the nature of these questions. First one, it looks like you guys are new to the market. It looks like you're just in the Ohio market. How many, when did you say you guys began doing out-of-home?
So my partner's been in it for about five years, and I joined his team two and a half, two and a half years ago.
Okay, I noticed that you're doing it one side. How come you guys decided not to opt for a two-side billboard? Being that the traffic would be flowing in both directions?
Yeah, we thought this question might come up, and we've actually seen a few different zoning regulations. But one of the things in the zoning regulations under standards, C one, so standard C says an off-premise sign shall be, and then number one is oriented only in one direction. So we took that as we could only have one-sided signs. Maybe we were incorrect. But the other thing, obviously, is based on the fifty-foot height and Martin Luther King, we call it one sixty-four, I think you guys call it Martin Luther King, that backside may or may not be visible to two sixty-four. And even if it is visible, we think the visibility might be a little bit blocked by that overpass of Martin Luther King Expressway to eastbound two sixty-four passersby.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing, because I wasn't sure about the actual height, and there was no visuals provided for how it would look in concept in that area. So that was one of the concerns I had. And I think you actually addressed my other main concern, and that was the fact that you guys are looking to do additional billboards in this area? Because I have buildings in Ohio, and I wasn't as familiar with your company. So I was just wondering, like, the grasp and your ability to maintain the billboard as well.
Sure, that's a great question. So as Tyler mentioned, we've hired Coastal Edge Landscaping, their local landscaping company, to do the rendering, and obviously, we have to work with the city on that. We didn't, we're not the best at picking out bushes or flowers or trees or whatever the city is most desirable. Regarding our ability to maintain, we would hire whoever's necessary. And obviously, we typically make about two or three trips a year to double-check on all of our investments. I think one of your other questions was how many billboards, can billboards get oversaturated in the area? So we are based out of Ohio, but one of our niches is we can take the zoning code and the state codes for outdoor advertising and find spots in certain cities. And I just want to lay to rest that in Portsmouth, this is probably the only possible location near the interstate. I can't speak for every location downtown or on non-high-traffic areas, but regarding V D O-controlled areas, this would be the only location that would be possible. V D O has very strict regulations. Each sign has to be five hundred feet apart, et cetera, et cetera. So I wanted to speak to that, because I believe you'd asked that question as well.
Yeah, and I wasn't as concerned about this one. I just wonder if the floodgate would be opening. But my question about the maintenance is really on the side when it comes to with digital boards, they tend to bulbs blow or there's issues due to storms. Do you guys foresee issues with repairing those type of concerns?
Sure, so yeah, I guess one thing I should let you Sure. So yeah, I guess one thing I should let you know is we use Watchfire signs. So they are kind of the Cadillac of the industry as far as digital billboard signs go. They're actually remotely monitored by Watchfire and we have cameras on the billboard itself. So we check it. If, let's say, one LED unit goes bad, each square foot is one unit. Watchfire alerts us, says, hey, you got one LED that's bad. And we have, like I said, remote cameras that we can view. And so typically, we know within hours of, we have a bulb that's out and then we know we would fly down next day and repair it or we, we would figure it out very, very fast because obviously it's how we make money. So we would want that fixed really fast. But yeah, we don't foresee any issues as far as repairing billboards. Basically, Watchfire signs are warranted for 10 years and, I mean, every 10 years we replace them. So I don't foresee any issues, no.
Okay, and last question, I promise. There was a mention of Amber Alerts and things like that. Is there a cross-channel allotment made available to the city and nonprofits that would be standard in your inventory?
So any unused space that we have, we are more than willing to work with the city on, you know, whatever you guys got going on. And we'd be willing to work with the city on a lower rate for advertising if you guys got the local strawberry festival or those types of things. But yeah, any unused space, we typically try and work with the city just to show a good faith relationship like that.
That was all my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Coleman?
No questions.
Commissioner Page?
I have no question.
Commissioner Barnes?
No question.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-21-02. I have no registered speakers. If there is someone on the call who would like to address this application, you may do so at this time. If you would come forward, state your name and your address for the record. Press star six to unmute your mic and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second for UP-21-02 with conditions.
This is Commissioner G. I move for approval of UP-21-02 with conditions.
Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Page. I second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve UP-21-02 with condition. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Pardon me. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
This item is approved seven to zero with conditions. Our next item, UP-21-03 Greenwood at Bethel. Alvin Keels of D&amp;K Builders requests a use permit for a 280-unit multifamily and mixed-use development consisting of seven four-story apartment buildings and a restaurant within a clubhouse on, pardon me, within a clubhouse on a 13.79-acre parcel at 4358 Greenwood Drive in the multifamily urban residential URM zoning district with a proposed density of 20.3 dwelling units per acre. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for single-family residential low-to-medium density. The property is owned by the Cavalier Manor Development Group, LLC, and is identified as Tax Map 559 Parcel 1. The staff coordinator is Julie Chop. With the staff coordinator for this application, please come forward and present your application at this time.
Hi, good afternoon, Planning Commissioners, City Council Liaisons. This is Julie Chop, Senior Planner with the City of Portsmouth. The use permit application before you today involves the property at 4358 Greenwood Drive. Alvin Keels, on behalf of Cavalier Manor Development Group, LLC, is requesting a use permit for A4 acres at Greenwood, a gated 280-unit multifamily apartment development consisting of seven four-story apartment buildings and a clubhouse with a coffee shop. The 13.2-acre property is in the multifamily urban residential URM zoning district and is located on the northwest corner of Greenwood Drive and Taswell Street. The surrounding properties to the north, south, and east are zoned urban residential URM. One-story, single-family detached dwellings in the Cavalier Manor neighborhood and vacant land are located to the north of the property. Across Taswell Street to the east are single-family detached dwellings in the Cavalier Manor neighborhood, New Bethel Baptist Church, and a small strip shopping center. To the south, across Greenwood Drive, are single-family detached dwellings in Cavalier Manor. The property to the west contains a 240-unit condominium neighborhood known as Charlestown Townhouses, which is zoned multifamily urban residential URM. The density of Charlestown Townhouses is 10 dwelling units per acre. Each approximately 50,000-square-foot apartment building will include 40 units and an elevator. The proposed density of the development is 20.3 dwelling units per acre. The clubhouse will contain a coffee shop that will be open to the public and approximately 1,800-square-foot swimming pool and a 385-square-foot poolhouse with a canopy are also proposed to the north of the clubhouse. A playground, a linear park, a gazebo, and a .62-mile pathway are proposed in the center park area of the site. Two dog parks are shown on the conceptual site plan, one adjacent to Greenwood Drive and another at the northern edge of the property. The proposal includes 5.69 acres of open space set aside. The submitted conceptual site plan displays three access points to the development. One extending from Freedom Avenue, another along Taswell Street, and one from Greenwood Drive. The applicant submitted an alternative parking plan with a parking demand study. Parking is proposed at a rate of 0.75 parking spaces per bedroom. Parking for the coffee shop is provided in accordance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The total parking proposed for the development is 467 parking spaces. The applicant also submitted a traffic impact analysis that provided recommendations to accommodate the proposed multifamily dwelling use. The TIA recommended two left-turn lanes with capers on Greenwood Drive and signaling changes. Compliance with the TIA will be conditioned as part of the use permit. Elevations of all sides for each of the, of each of the seven apartment buildings, including proposed materials, are shown here and conformity will be conditioned as part of this use permit application. The main entryway of the buildings will face inward towards the interior parking area. This slide shows the elevations of the proposed approximately 7,500-square-foot clubhouse that includes a coffee shop. The A4 acres at Greenwood multifamily proposal has similarities to UP-16-08, a proposed multifamily development, also with 280 units and also with a density of 20.3 dwelling units per acre, which was denied by City Council in 2016. City Council has recognized the community's desire for this property to be developed with single-family dwellings. The proposed use is inconsistent with the single-family residential low-to-medium-density future land use map designation for this parcel that was adopted as part of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan upon request of the United Civic League of Cavalier Manor. Therefore, based on the previous use permits denial and the proposal's irregularity with the future land use map's parcel designation, staff recommends denial of UP-21-03. However, should the Planning Commission and City Council elect to approve this application, staff has prepared appropriate conditions for consideration as listed in the staff report. This concludes my presentation and I would be happy to stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any questions of Ms. Chop. I have none. Commissioner Youngblood?
None of Ms. Chop, but I will have questions later.
Commissioner Thaxton?
None at this time.
Commissioner G?
None for now.
Commissioner Coleman?
No questions.
Commissioner Page?
No questions.
Commissioner Barnes?
No question.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the public hearing on item UP-21-03. Citizens will be called upon to provide comments or questions and are asked to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments and to mute your microphones when you are not speaking. Will the applicant for UP-21-03 come forward to provide any additional information or comments? Please state your name and address for the record and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
I'm going to chime in and allow the architect on this project, Tom Rettenauer, to go first and then the engineer is Haggard Yor to follow. So Tom, if you're here, go ahead and take the floor.
Thank you, Alvin. Just wanted to make sure everybody can hear me. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Planning Commission members. We're excited to be here to present this project to you. This is the Evergreen at Bethel. It has 280 units. It'll be 56 one-bedrooms, 142 bedrooms, and 84 three-bedroom units. We've created this as a fresh, modern design using four-story high buildings to maximize the open space. The materials that we planned are durable and lasting. The project will look both outward and inward, so there will be a focus at the green space on the interior and then looking out also to the outside. The building design utilizes a low-slope roof system. So the scale of the building is within the 40 feet of required height. A rich mixture of colors and materials will create a clean and modern appearance. Canile-warded canopies cover each building entry. Each unit has its own outdoor area. Building utilizes an interior corridor arrangement with an oversized elevator providing access to upper floors. The community building is one-story to provide for open vistas to the interior of the site. The building has amenities such as business office, community room, pool area with outdoor kitchens. There will be included the latest technologies such as electric charging stations, programming thermostats in all units, and energy-efficient design throughout the project. Units are designed to have washer and dryer hookups and modern kitchens with solid surface counters. Each unit has oversized closets and other unit features. One of the questions that we've heard is why multifamily, not single-family? So I'm going to go through a couple of those quickly and then move on. Statistics have shown time and again, to create a more vibrant city, having a selection of living choices allows various age groups to help populate a city. In this case, having high-quality, market-rate apartments that can attract both DOD and non-DOD residents will help improve the population of Portsmouth. Hampton Roads is a reason that is very transient. Greenwood will serve the following populations, including that transient nature. Demand analysis. We've done a demand analysis on this. The market-rate apartments that are within the analysis are basically all at 100% capacity. And right now, they're projecting this to be at 96% capacity within two years. It'll be located close enough for students, faculty, and staff at TCC to be able to have a short commute to the campus from this location. DOD families that are stationed on a typical three-year station will also be able to stay here. Apartments offer many advantages over homeownership for this population. Research has also found that when people start living in the community, begin the process of schooling, they would rather stay in the community. Greenwood offers that opportunity for families to begin their life in Portsmouth and when prepared, can buy a home at the next logical step. New Court could be the next step up for people. Finally, single-family ownership is very difficult for the younger generations right now to achieve. Because of the rise in construction costs and cost of land, creating single-family houses that would require the price of the homes to be out of reach on the younger generation that can provide vitality in communities. The density of this site will force them to have a higher number of people living and working in the community. This creates more opportunities for businesses to flourish. No longer will people have to traverse the tunnels. Thank you very much.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Chris Stubbs with Haggard Yor Associates, a civil engineering, a civil engineering and surveying firm based here at 901 Port Center Parkway, Suite 5, in Portsmouth, Virginia. As staff and as Tom mentioned, it's a 280-unit multifamily development with seven buildings, each housing about 40 units. Right now, the unit mix-up that the parking study is based off of is 56 one-bedroom units, 142 bedroom units, and 84 three-bedroom units. In addition to the residences, there's a proposed clubhouse and a coffee shop and a host of side amenities, including three parks, as well as a water feature, storm for stormwater management up near the intersection of Greenwood and Taswell. In addition, to address stormwater quality on-site, there will be a linear park and BNP that will be designed as an attractive feature for the community. And then finally, there's finally a third park in the bottom-right corner of the development that would be for pets and other animals that the residents would have. The development will include a playground, a gazebo, as well as the pool and community center. Parking will be met on-site in accordance with the parking study that staff mentioned. That's based on research data from the Institute of Traffic Engineers. Park at a rate of .75 per bedroom. The community itself will be gated and the parking area will be well-lit for improved security. All right, I yield the rest of my time. If there are any questions, please do not hesitate to ask.
Madam Secretary, that's five minutes for the applicant.
Okay. All right, the applicant, there's five minutes. Mr. Chairman?
The Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any questions of the applicant or his architect or engineer. I have none. Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes, I have some questions for Mr. Keels since he's the developer. Is he still on the call?
Yes, I misunderstood. I thought that they were going to speak as-
Sir, would you identify yourself?
Yeah, my name's Alvin Keels Jr. I'm the developer. And my address is 4061 Estates Lane, Portsmouth, Virginia.
Great. Mr. Keels, what will be the proposed rent for these apartments? The one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom?
The one-bedroom proposed rents will be between $1050 and $1,100 per month. The two-bedrooms will be between $1,350 and $1,450 per month. And the three-bedrooms will be between $1,575 and $1,650 per month. And this will be a market-rate product and residents will be required to make three times the amount of rent to qualify.
Thank you, sir. You're with A4 Development Group, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
What other properties have you developed?
We're actually, we've done a lot of infill building and we're developing a community in the Prentice Park area right now in Portsmouth.
And, but my development team, as far as, I'm a relatively new developer. However, my development team has extensive experience at developing larger apartment communities. So this will be, you know, my first and, you know, my largest project to date. But up until today, I've developed single-family homes, single-family communities.
So you're stepping out of the gate into something big. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I don't know how to do it small.
I've got a little bit of a concern here. I noticed that you only have one elevator per unit, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that would be forty units per building, so roughly ten per floor. And I'm going to tell you, I would not want to rent the top floor if there's any chance that that elevator's going to go out. What are your thoughts along those lines?
That's something that I would actually like to defer to my architect. You know, that's something that we can address. It came up in a civic league meeting yesterday. You know, but right now, it's shown that the one elevator would be feasible for the property. But I can let Tom chime in, if you don't mind.
Well, I understand it's doable. I just know of some other places here in town where they've had problems when one of the two elevators went out, and it turned out to be the freight elevator, and that has delayed some people being able to sell their units, this is in a condo, because they can't move out, and the new people can't move in. In this case, you'd be struggling even to carry your groceries in. I'm sure that there are places where this is perfectly acceptable, but when you're talking market rate, you're looking at folks that aren't going to put up with some of these inconveniences. So I'm sure you've done your studies. I just want to, I want to voice my concern.
Right. And that's something that we'll definitely revisit, you know, throughout the design. Final to the point, may add an additional elevator to the building.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Commissioner Thaxton?
I have no questions at this moment.
Commissioner G?
Mr. Keels, I do have a quick question for you. Given your past experience with developing single-family, I know it's going to come up lately, or later, and it's probably come up in your previous meetings, the desire to have single-family in this area. In your opinion, why has single-family not worked in the past or would not work in the future? You, as a developer, why would you choose to do multifamily versus that single-family option?
That's a great question. On this particular property, you know, I think that the best use for the land is definitely to add density to the area. With the new ordinances that have been passed in Portsmouth, requiring each lot to be seventy-five hundred square feet, the most amount of single-family homes that I can place on fourteen acres of land is our forty-four homes, which to me, isn't the best use of the land, especially with all that we have going on around this parcel, with the new entertainment district coming. You know, with being right there up the street from Tywhar Community College, and with all of the growth that's gone on in Newport with single-family homes. So this particular land, from a tax standpoint, you know, with the seven buildings and the improvement of the land, the city stands to make almost twice the amount in tax revenue with apartments, as opposed to forty-four single-family homes on this particular piece of land. So, I mean, from the development cost, just developing the land for forty-four homes, the lot prices would be astronomical as far as what we would have to put them on the market for. I mean, we would be looking at lots that would go for almost eighty thousand dollars, you know, in Cavalier Manor, and I think that that would be relatively rich for the area. So I think apartment, the best use for the land, it's already zoned for apartments. And this will be, this will be a luxury product that we're bringing to Cavalier Manor that could go into any community in Hampton Roads and stand out.
Oh, thank you. That was my only question. And just for clarification, let me check back. This is no longer zoned for apartments. I believe it's zoned for single-family now. Isn't that correct?
No, no, it's zoned for apartments. It's still zoned. I would have to get it rezoned for single-family. The comprehensive use map has changed to suggest single-family moving forward, but it's still zoned for multifamily right now. So, you know, I would technically have, I'm asking for permission to do what it's already zoned for.
I don't think so.
So I can clarify a little bit. The zoning district that forty-three fifty-eight Greenwood Drive is in is the U R M zoning district, the multifamily urban residential zoning district. But even within that zoning district, a use permit is required to develop multifamily developments. The comprehensive plan, the future land-use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this parcel for a single-family residential low-to-medium density.
Thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes, I do have a question. Thank you, Mr. Keels. I just had a question based on the layout. Have you given any thought to perhaps the units along Taswell Street? Because they do front those residential homes right there, to make something of a transition to where it is lower-rise buildings that maybe get taller as you go to the rear, maybe that are adjacent to the townhomes, something that a resident wouldn't look out and necessarily see? I mean, while the apartment buildings are going to be nice and new, it does look like, you know, something in a city or kind of an industrial-type look to look out their front doors. That's just, that's just a thought that I had. But other than that, I don't have any questions.
That's a great question. Actually, you know, what they'll see when they look out of their front doors, it's going to be a walking trail. We have a buffer between the street and the actual building. So the building is, yes, there'll be four stories to achieve. My goal here was to achieve the density while building a community that would have a lot of green space and a lot of amenities. And so what I didn't want to do was load the property up with a whole lot of buildings that were smaller to take away from the aesthetics of the community. So what you'll see when you're looking out of your front doors, you'll see greenery. We'll have beautiful landscaping going around the community, as you can see. We'll have a walking trail, so you'll more than likely see residents walking their dogs, jogging, you know, take leisurely strolls around the community. And so I don't, me personally, I don't think it's going to be an eyesore. I think it will be actually welcoming to see that type of activity across the street, because it's going to breed life.
Thank you.
Commissioner Page?
No comment.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, I have a few questions. You said it's a gated community?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is it like a key code access? Or is it just, how is this going to work?
Well, we plan to have key code and remote access at the gates. And each unit will also have a security code component to it to get inside. The units will all have interior entrances. So it'll be key-coded and remote.
Okay, so like if there's an emergency, like if there's ambulance or something needed to come, they will be able to get in with no problem?
Yes.
Okay. And also, you say you have a clubhouse. Who will be in the clubhouse?
The clubhouse will consist of a business center, lounging areas for the residents, you know, they want to just get out of the unit and, you know, take in some television and use the Wi-Fi. We'll also have a state-of-the-art fitness center in the clubhouse. And off to the right, we'll have a commercial coffee shop.
Okay. Okay, and the last question, with the gate entrance, would that interfere with like the bus stops that they have around the area?
No, it will not. It will not impede on the bus stop.
Okay, that's all I have.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the public hearing on item U P dash twenty-one dash zero three. I do have several speakers. As I call your name, would you come forward? State your name and your address for the record. Please press star six to unmute your mic, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Ray Smith.
Madam Secretary, I do not see the number that Mr. Smith provided on the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Peginter. We will come back to him or give him an opportunity at the end. I will go to our next speaker. Our next speaker is Gary Harris. If you're on the call, please come forward.
Yes, I'm on the call. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, super. I'll be quick. First and foremost, thanks so much for having me today and an opportunity to provide comments. I'm not here to speak for nor against the development. However, I want to raise the issue that this is strictly about land use. You know, it's not about apartments, it's not about single-family homes. It's about land use, and land use that maximizes the utility and also the social welfare of the community. That's the question here and such. To date, and over a number of years, there's been no survey of the residents to determine what they want to do with the land. That's why it's been begging for so many years and such. They haven't asked the question whether they want a park. How about that? A park? Or a walking trail, or community-scale solar, or nothing like that, okay? So this is about maximizing the utility and social welfare of the community. That's the issue on the table and such. The planning process itself seems to emphasize development and not what is equitable, or not what is resilient, or not what is sustainable for the community and such. The developer, Alvin, his literature talks about the fact that he wants to build communities. I think if I was the developer, I would, I want to do community building, i.e. partnering with NGOs who are already present in the community and doing work and partnering with them in that way to help build the community and such. Also, the value of the proposed site itself ranges, I'm thinking, between fifty, sixty, maybe seventy thousand dollars and such. It is located directly adjacent to Taswell Street. Some of the lowest-income folks in our communities, and some of the lowest-value homes in our community as well. gentrification is going to occur, development-induced displacement is going to occur as well and such. But there's ways to mitigate that, you know, and a developer can step in and help to mitigate those two externalities and such. You know, there's land use legislation, there's policies that can evoke a number of things to help mitigate gentrification and also development-induced displacement. The development, they can step in and do that. Also, the proposed project itself is a gated community, and that would help to exacerbate the economic disparities already present in the community. We're already divided into a community of have-and-have-nots and such. So, and also, it's really not necessary. The crime rate is not that high here and such. So maybe some enhanced security, monitoring features and such, but gated? Nah, no way. That would exacerbate the economic disparities already present here and such. Also, the development needs to be inclusive. I mean, that's what ethical development is all about. And right now, the high rents make it exclusive to the folks who can afford it. Why not carve out five to ten percent of the two hundred and eighty-seven proposed apartments for lower-income residents, just five to ten percent? So it's such that we can have some increased mobility in the community and also, again, could create a small segment of affordable housing. Also, the development itself, in terms of benefiting the community from an economic perspective, i.e. increasing wealth through home ownership, doesn't do that. It negates that benefit. So why not have a rent-to-own option embedded in the apartment itself? So that folks can accumulate wealth. One of the disparities in our communities is economics, okay? And if we can get folks owning homes, that's the approach that we want to take. Also, I was so glad to hear, at long last, somebody talked about, I think it was one of the engineers talked about energy and energy efficiency and sustainability. Somebody finally brought those features to the table, glad to hear that, because one of the features, one of the disparities in our community itself are energy burdens. Folks are paying high costs for electric bills, and it was good to hear that the apartment, the developer complex was going to incorporate energy efficiency features as well. Also, if you want to maximize the benefits to the community, go to them and provide them with a community benefits agreement. I.e., this is not an agreement for you to build, but it's a recognition that-
That's time.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Our next speaker, Mr. Robert Harris. If you would come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Please press star six to unmute your mic, and you will have your five minutes.
We did not have a number for Mr. Harris, Jr., and I don't see anybody attempting to speak that is on the call.
Okay, we will move forward. Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Yudalde Yutrowski. If you would please come forward, state your name and your address for the record.
Good afternoon. Honorable Commissioners and neighbors. I'm Mark Yudalde Yutrowski, E O Box five oh one four one, Portsmouth, Virginia. Now, I would need the rest of this meeting and then some to unpack what my neighbor, Mr. Harris, dropped into his short speech. And I found myself in agreement with everything he had to say. So, thank you for anticipating the need. And let me add a couple of other things that were not in his presentation. I think the biggest argument in this is the history of this particular development or this particular area in Cavalier Manor. It has gone through a couple of failed attempts to do something similar to what the applicant is proposing. Now, this is updated. This is a Twenty-First Century application. There are some additional amenities here that make the development desirable to a potential renter. But as Mr. Harris stated, what is the benefit to the community as a whole? There would be a potential benefit to the city if it pans out as the developer states. It would put land that is underperforming in terms of the tax benefit to the city. Bring it up to a higher level. But for the people who are here now and who have been here, because Cavalier Manor has many long-term residents, what would it do for the value of their properties? Would it actually enhance the value, or would it diminish, as the previous Bonneville apartments undoubtedly did? That remains to be seen. That remains to be seen. It is an uncontrolled experiment. The results will play out over a number of years, probably decades, and we really can't know going into it. So, let me revert to the staff recommendation and the reason for it. You know, the future planning map does not have this as one of the anticipated uses. So, why do we put together planning maps if we don't intend to work within that framework? If they're not really planning documents at all, just words and numbers on pieces of paper? I think to be true, first of all, to the residents, the community, the current residents and, and the past residents, who are current residents, who've invested in this community, and to the vision as laid out in the plan, it is not in, in the overall best interest to approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP dash twenty-one dash zero-three. If there is someone on the call who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward at this time, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Michael Massey. My address is forty-twenty-nine at State Lane. I'm in Portsmouth, in two-three-seven oh-three in Churchwood. Um, and I'd just like to take a couple of minutes to address, um, the issue. Um, I'd be very candid. I do represent, uh, Mr. Keels. I would say to the Planning Commission, I would ask you all to be very critical about this process, because I think if you look at the reason for the denial from the city, you'll see uh, one of the most crucial things is the position of the civic league. Since I've been representing Mr. Keels, we've done and gone through considerable efforts to get, to try to get a feel from the Cavalier Manor residents about what they feel about this project, so we could make it in line with the community. So, on January fourteenth, we asked the civic league to put together a Zoom, and at that Zoom, uh, there were seven people, there were twelve people present, five were members of the civic league, five were from Mr. Keels' team, and there were two city council members. On February twenty-second, we sent out eight thousand flyers to make sure that all the residents, uh, got some idea of what was going on. On that flyer, we gave a description of the project, and we invited them to a Zoom on February twenty-fourth. On February twenty-fourth, we conducted a Zoom, and we had, at our Zoom that Mr. Keels put together, we had about a hundred people attend. Of those hundred people who attended, there were twenty-seven people in full support, um, of this project. Uh, two people stated very clearly that they did not, and one person said they needed more information. We went one step further, and we asked, um, Mr. Ray Smith, the chair for the list of persons on the civic league, um, who were not supporting the project. He gave us a list of thirty-seven names, and those were the names of the people he said did not support it. He indicated he thought there were sixty, but there are actually thirty-seven. And of those thirty-seven, um, seven of those people don't live in Cavalier Manor. So, when you talk about, and this is the critical piece I want the Planning Commission to understand, when you say the civic league doesn't support it, what you're talking about, based on the data that we have, is about thirty people. And so, you're gonna, when you're gonna make a decision on what's best for the city, typically, you would leave that in the hands of such a limited, uh, group of folks. I'm not trying to disrespect the civic league in any way, but I think we, we all have to be honest about what does this data mean? And what does it mean when one says, one says the civic league doesn't support it? Because the civic league and the community of Cavalier Manor are very different, uh, groups. The Cavalier Manor community is a much larger group. As Mr. Harris said, there's never been any polling for the people in Cavalier Manor to see what they wanted to do with this project. And so, that's critical, because an old city council did not approve this based on a small number of people saying that the civic league didn't support it, but that's not true as it relates to Cavalier Manor residents. What do the Cavalier Manor residents want? So, we should, and we would implore upon you not to make your decision on, based on such a small, really a de minimis amount of people as it relates to the number of people who live in Cavalier Manor. If your position is that you just don't think it's good for the city, then that's very different. But to base that decision based on a civic league that has such a small group of people, I don't think it's, uh, fair to Mr. Keels. I don't think it's representative of critical analysis as it relates to what is important for the city of Portsmouth. And I know that you all want to make sure that the city continues to grow what he spoke of as it relates to the financial benefits to the city. Those things are real. When you're talking about bringing this number of people into an apartment complex that make the income that Mr. Keels' project demands, that can only help Portsmouth. Portsmouth has been so critical, and, and people have been so critical about Portsmouth with the lack of housing. So, now we have a project that's top-tier. The people, this is a project where brand-new college students with their first jobs, people have been working for a while, that they can live in a nice, safe community in Cavalier Manor. And it enhances Cavalier Manor. It doesn't take anything away from that ci- from that area. Now, I understand people want, sometimes people get stuck and they want the same, because they haven't seen something better. You're talking about a gated community with a coffee shop, a swimming pool, a fitness center. This is state-of-the-art, and this enhances Portsmouth, and we should look at what's in the best interest of the city. And this project is definitely in the best city, best interest of the city of Portsmouth. And we hope that this new county sees that, and we hope that the Planning Commission sees that as well. We certainly understand the staff report, but I think the staff report also needed to take into consideration who are they talking about when they say United Civic League, and how many people are you actually speaking of? I thank you all for your time and consideration. Thanks for doing such a deliberate job.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Massey. Is there anyone else on the call who would like to address this application?
Yes, my name is Lee Dear, and I live at, uh, one thousand Tazwell Street, um, right across from, um, the property that we're talking about, and, uh, I'll be looking at that fence and the coffee shop.
Sir, can you, uh, repeat that again? I did not get your name.
Yes, my name is Lee Dear, and I live at one thousand Tazwell Street, right across from the fence and, uh, you know, and that coffee shop that, um, you know, I, I may or may not be able to, uh, partake in or, or visit, uh, because it's a gated community. Um, I, my two concerns are, one, the safety, um, with, uh, having a gated community there. Uh, one of the concerns with, um, you know, the influx of, of people, and yes, it'll be a higher value, uh, and, and a higher price tag attached to it. So, you know, one would assume that, uh, the, the people that are coming will have, you know, w- would, would change. So, um, uh, my concerns are the safety and security. So, what steps, um, is the apartment complex, um, taking and, and the developer taking to ensure the safety of the people that don't live inside the gate? Um, and then my other concern with the community, um, so with the ga- with the eyesore that, uh, uh, we all talked about, that, uh, was mentioned earlier, uh, from looking outside of my window, um, you know, what, what will that do for our property value as well? And not only having a, a, you know, an eyesore, but, uh, uh, what are some of the, the concerns and some of the things that you're gonna do to address security outside of the area as well?
Thank you, Mr. Dear. Um, Mr. Ray Smith has joined the call. If you're prepared now, you can come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Can, can you hear me, Regina?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, good afternoon, Chairman Williams, commissioners, city staff, and, uh, citizens that may be listening. My name is Ray Smith, and I live at one-two-two-seven Darren Drive in this community of Cavalier Manor, and I am the president of this Cavalier Manor Civic League. And just, uh, to update, uh, some that may not be aware, Cavalier Manor dates back to the mid-fifties and was built by George T. McLean, almost... There are almost, uh, thirty-five-hundred, I said thirty-five-hundred single-family homes and, um, eight-thousand-plus residents. Also in our boundaries are just three multifamily developments, which are Charlestown, and then a row of ten private townhouses at Greenwood and, and, uh, Cavalier, plus the longtime Cavalier rental apartments. That's about, I guess, about thirty or forty, uh, apart- rental apartments. As, uh, some commissioners may remember, in the recent year, the city has presented with two proposals for this fourteen-acre property, all apartments ranging from two-fifty to over three-hundred. We have consistently stood for single-family homes. Based on apartment density, which impacts traffic, schools, the environment as far as stormwater runoff, and, number one, public safety, which includes fire response. That will greatly impact the fire department, the two stations on Hodges Ferry and one on Victory, due to the size and the heights of the units. We petitioned the city council back in twenty-eighteen to incorporate a comprehensive plan, end their comprehensive plan to, to desire for single-family homes, and was unanimously approved as part of the future use for this parcel. Ult- ultimately, the new owner may not have been aware, but he felt the change, he could change the community's minds. In all fairness to him, he's incorporated in his own plans to address some of the past concerns. We have communicated numerous times and held Zoom meetings for the community input. The overwhelming majority of Cavalier Manor League members and non-member respondents believe homeownership is vital to a strong neighborhood and generate longevity and wholesome communities. On behalf of the League and the community respondents who communicated with me beginning back as early as January eleventh until even the very day this morning, on behalf of them, we have communicated and we respectfully oppose the introduction of almost three hundred apartments on this site and transit attendants. We believe a development that meets the needs of our community should incorporate single homes. We further request you deny the request for the use permit. We have diligently tried to put this word out, not only to our fifty-some dues-paying members, but we've reached out to the entire community. We've even advocated for the developer to reach out across the community. But our, the responses to me by social media, email, Facebook, phone calls have been an overwhelming opposition. We've only had about three or four people that have called in to me, uh, expressing support for the project. There have been Zoom meetings, uh, there have been individual meetings with, with the developer. There have been surveys taken, as I said, amongst the members. That member list was also passed along to, um, Attorney Massey and, uh, Mr. Keels. So, we've tried to do as much as we can to get the word out, but the Cavalier Manor residents and the Cavalier Manor Civic League stand in opposition, and we prefer single-family homes. And again, to repeat, we further request that you deny this request for use permit. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I had a question for Mr. Smith. I do apologize. Uh, Mr. Smith, how you doing today, sir? Always a pleasure to speak with you. Uh, this is Commissioner G. This is Commissioner G. I do apologize.
Yes, yes.
Uh, I just had a question, and it's similar to the question I asked, uh, Mr. Keels earlier. It was with regards to why do you, why do you feel that we haven't been able to accomplish the goals, uh, that the community set for those single-family homes? Um, I, I remember when this did come before the Planning Commission in the past, and I've just been wondering. We, we want the single-family homes. Yes, single-family homes are desirable there, but we're not seeing that come, come to fruition. What can we, what do you think, uh, is one of the issues with that? Especially given, uh, your position on economic, uh, development, you may have better insights than we do on planning.
Well, the, the bottom line here, Mr. G, as you, you should know, is money, uh, the biggest bang for the buck. Developers are looking to make millions of dollars off projects. This project is, then, there's gonna be probably a close to fifty-million-dollar investment in this, uh, property because of the size of it. Single-family homes will not reap the same type of benefit, so that's why you haven't had any proposal. We've, we've discussed that. I've actually reached out to developers myself, you know, trying to gain some interest, and, again, they all, it's about money, it's about the dollar, and, and they want to make as much as possible. And they can make money off single-family homes, but they, not to the magnitude that they can make off of two or three hundred apartments.
Thank you, sir. Regina, you're on mute, I think.
Commissioner Barnes, I see your hand is raised. Do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I have a question for Mr. Keels.
Mr. Keels?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, I was just wondering, with your, um, with your apartment complex, with the, uh, money you made in investment, would you be able to help out the community in Cavalier Manor?
One-hundred percent. Now, that's a great question, and I've actually approached the civic league and, uh, various community organizations about, uh, giving back to the community. Uh, one-hundred percent. I've offered to, uh, invest in the, uh, neighborhood watch cars. I've offered to invest in the Cavalier Manor, uh, sports programs, the STEM program. Uh, I'm, I'm definitely, I've already started, uh, I've already started investing back into the community. So, that's one of, uh, my initiatives, and, and I, and I just want to say, yes, I, you know, from a financial standpoint, apartments are better than single-family homes, uh, you know, for the city and for the developer. However, I mean, I'm a developer that's from Portsmouth that's also looking to reinvest in the community, and so when I say that I'm about community and building communities, it, it's not just about how much money I'm taking in, it's also about, you know, what I'm willing to give back, so... But I, I, I pride and had these conversations, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are, uh, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone else on the line who would like to address this application, this is your time to come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Ms. Chastain, this is Mr. Rettnow, the architect. Am I allowed to speak to some of these comments?
I will, uh, yield to the chairman. Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Rettnow, as long as you make it brief.
Absolutely.
There's been a lot of discussion about single-family on this lot, so I'd like to clear this up. In regards to single-family, the cost of developing a family are not feasible on this property. The construction costs have dramatically increased since this was last looked at in two thousand and sixteen. A typical house and the property on here would have to sell for upwards of five hundred thousand dollars for any developer to actually, um, make a profit on this. So, in regards to the best land use of this property, the multifamily is actually the most, uh, intelligent use of using the property since it's already zoned for this. But single-family, that's why you're not getting any proposals, is actually just not feasible at this point. So, um, just wanted to point a couple of other things out. There was talk about elevators. A typical elevator will handle one hundred apartments, so we are well within the typical use of that. Um, the gated community, the clubhouse will be actually outside of the gates, so the coffee shop and the clubhouse would be accessible to others, uh, at any time at this point. Um, but I did want to talk about the residential zoning of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rettnow. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Again, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here on the call who would like to address UP dash twenty-one dash zero-three, please come forward at this time. State your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion on, uh, UP dash? Commissioners, is there any further discussion on, uh, UP dash 21 dash 03? If not, the chair's in need of a mo-, I'm sorry, was there someone? If not, the chair's in need of a motion and a second.
Uh, I'll move for acceptance of UP 21 dash 03.
We have a motion, is there a second?
This is Commissioner Page, our second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion.
Hey Regina?
Yes?
Julie had recommended conditions in the staff report. Is Mr. G. saying that those conditions should be part of the approval recommendation?
I will accept that friendly amendment to my motion, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Swett. Thank you, Commissioner G. Okay, we now have a motion and a second to approve UP dash 21 dash 03 with conditions. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Youngblood?
No.
Commissioner Thaxton?
No.
Commissioner G.?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman? Commissioner Page? Commissioner Barnes? This item is, uh, failed by a vote of four to three. Mr. Chairman?
The, uh, Madam Secretary, did you say four to three?
It was four noes and three yeses to approve. Four noes to approve and three yeses.
Could you, could you, could you tell me right quick what, who, who the, could you go through the list of, for me again?
Yes, not a problem. Mr. Williams is no, Commissioner Youngblood, no, Commissioner Thaxton, no, Commissioner G., yes, Commissioner Coleman, no, Commissioner Page, yes, and Commissioner Barnes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And the motion was to approve.
No, no. No, no. Chair? The, the motion, the motion was defeated.
Right, right, but that's what the motion was, but it, but it was defeated.
Right.
It was defeated. We're, we're good.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I think it would be appropriate to take a motion to deny at this point if anyone is of a mind to make one.
Yes, sir, I think it would be appropriate to take a motion to deny if any, uh, planning
commissioners of a mind to make one.
Yes, this is Sherri Thaxton. I'd like to make a motion to deny UP dash 21 dash 03.
There is a motion to deny?
Right.
Uh, is there?
This is Donna Coleman. I make a motion to second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny UP 21 dash 03. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to deny UP dash 21 dash 03 with conditioner, conditions. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G.?
No.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page? Commissioner Barnes?
No.
Okay, this motion is approved to deny by a vote of four to three.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
You're welcome, sir.
Uh, Madam Secretary, we have, uh, under new business, we have one additional item that we need to consider, uh, today. Uh, that is a motion to approve a resolution to initiate amendments to the zoning ordinance to be prepared by staff. The chair's in need of a motion for this resolution.
This is Peter Youngblood. I make a motion that we approve that resolution to amend, um, zoning regulations.
Is there a second?
This is Sherri Thaxton, our second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to end up, uh, second to make an amendment to, uh, the zoning ordinance. Uh, Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yeah.
Point of order. You forgot me, you forgot me, Madam Secretary.
I apologize. Commissioner G. This item is approved by votes of seven to zero.
Uh, Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today, is that correct?
That is correct, correct, sir.
Commissioners, is there any other further business we need to discuss, uh, this afternoon? Mr. Baldwin, is there any further business?
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Chairman, there is not.
Hearing none, uh, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all.